I would like to start the meeting with a pledge of flag. A pledge to the citizens of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 21 Mill's Board Meeting. First item on the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the September 7, 2023 meeting? Any questions, changes on the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Citizens comments? Anybody wish to address the board? Nice to see you. Nice to know that somebody's watching us.
Oh, yeah.
Trustees comments, we'll start with Ruth.
Just the agenda, thank you.
Michael.
I'm going to call a brief executive session for a contractual meeting.
For what?
Contractual meeting.
Okay.
Brief contractual.
Okay. That's it, for you?
Yeah, I understand.
Move on to Nate.
I just wanted to hope everybody had a good time at Taste of Baldsville. Outside of that, you know, gold bells and stick with me.
All right. Eric.
I'd like to add item C, approve the purchase of supervisor control of data acquisition SCADA equipment system improvements at a price of $34,150 to SCADA Tech.
Okay, they have to repeat that when we get to that point. Should we get it all through? Anything else?
Anything else here?
Eric. That's it, sorry, that's it. Ray?
Just the agenda for me.
Bruce?
I'm going to add an executive session on both mugs, executive session for a personnel issue.
Okay.
So we're up to D and E?
Yep.
Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Make sure I get them right, say the D and E. Okay. Let's move on to the mayor stuff. I have a few things. The Reader's Choice Awards are out for you to vote on. And there are several Baldsville oriented businesses and events, like Taste of Baldsville, for instance, and Angry Garlic, and Angry Smokehouse, and Beaver Lake Nature Center, and The Golden Harvest, and it goes on and on. I will post on our Facebook and I'll have Jody put on our website the link so you can go in and vote. And, you know, I'm not telling you you got to vote for Baldsville things, but it's nice if you think they were pretty good to get the village represented. We've done well in the past, I know Papier-Mil Island a few years back, one has the best concert site in the area. Some of the businesses have won Taste of Central New York Reader's Choice Award. So I will post that so you can participate and be heard. I got a nice note from Chris Kimmack, who used to be Chris Shiro, her dad, Tony. Anthony Shiro turned 100 yesterday. So I said, I can't very well proclaim yesterday his day, but I will recognize him. If you've ever met Tony, he's a really nice guy, lived over in the Ford Track, I think on Wilkinson Place Extension, maybe somewhere in that area, very nice guy. Navy veteran, graduated University of Michigan, retired from General Electric, went to Sacred Mary's Church, and just celebrated 65 years living in the village. So it might be a day late, but it was with a lot of good feeling to wish Tony Shiro a happy birthday. PAC-B, do your favor now, they're looking for some people who would be interested in being on the PAC-B board. Your criteria is you have to live in viewing area of PAC-B and have an interest in the community. Not very strict guidelines, but it's if you have an interest in filming, fundraising, marketing, that's a bonus, but not a requirement. You also need somebody who wants to be on the board, who wouldn't mind serving as secretary for the group, mostly doing monthly meeting minutes, so it's not like a big extensive job. I will also place the contact for this on our Facebook site, just to give you a clue. You can do treasurer@pacbtv.org. But I will post it so that if you have some interest in being involved with PAC-B, I think some people get a little bit spoiled sometimes and don't realize what we have with PAC-B. I mean, there's communities, when I say our meetings are on every time we meet, they look at you funny. I say, oh, we have sporting events, we have school concerts, we have people reminiscing about the old days of the village. They say, that's on your television? You just turn on the TV? Yeah. There's not a lot of places have this available. So we could use some people to help keep it going the way it's been going. Baldsville Meals on Wheels, having a chicken barbecue September 30th. Starts at noon until they sell out, it's only $14. And I can speak from experience that their chicken barbecue is about as good as any that go on in the area. Don't get there too early because I don't want them run out before I get there. They still have some left. But it's for good cause, Meals on Wheels. Just, I'm always fascinated by these people who pull the water chestnuts out of the river and out of Cross Lake and stuff. Just so you know, as of the end of last week, they had pulled out over 9 million pounds of water chestnuts. I can't even comprehend 9 million pounds of anything but water chestnuts. And then they put them at some of the farms, particularly Emmy's Farm, they spread them out, and then as they dry in the sun and become one with nature again, apparently very good fertilizer. So it's quite a project, they've been working out at Vacation Marina, and up and down the river and in the Cross Lake. And I think they go until the weather stops them from doing it. And apparently you can't get rid of them. I mean, you can get rid of them now, but they come back. So I mean, we've done this, been doing this for years, and every year they pull out huge amounts. I don't think they've ever had 9 million pounds still here. Coming up soon, Halloween time, is the Ghost Walk. And this year's event for the Ghost Walk will be Friday, the 20th of October, and Saturday, the 21st, from 6 o'clock to 10:45. And this is a wandering around the village, you're led by somebody who is your guide. And it's usually a mysterious death that occurred in some house or a murder, and this person is first on the street. And it's dark, and you're walking down the street, they're talking about spooky things. And if you're into all that kind of stuff, it's pretty interesting. And they need 18 to 20 walking tour guides. And there is some compensation for that, including a ticket for a companion and some discounted tickets. And you do have to have some training. So you need to contact the people with the Ghost Walk. They also need 17, they have 17 walking tours a night. So they go in different directions, sometimes at the same time. They need tour guide coordinators, tent volunteers, and I'm sure they can use your help of any kind that you would like. Contact Jim Dale, it's jimdale@baldvillearts.org, I will also put that on Facebook. That's kind of cool, you get to see it, but you also get to help share it with people in the community. It's a pretty big event. Kind of nice. And there you go. So that'll get you ready for Halloween ahead of time. The thing on the notification for the liquor license to be read, is that something I should read now, Bob, or Jody, or should?
Yes.
Okay. This is involving Ms. Nora LLC's request for 30-day notification period to the village of Baldsville for its on-premises alcohol beverage license for Ms. Nora LLC located at 25 Syracuse Street. Transfer of the application from Twisted Sisters LLC. So that's just a notification that they're starting their 30 days for comments to the state, right?
They did not ask for an exemption or a waiver of that, so they're just giving us the notice and the period starts.
That's the official notice, and they have 30 days. There you go. Now we'll move on to department heads, and we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll just stick with you, Ken.
I'd like to thank our attorney for the information piece you sent us on smoke shops.
Oh.
I don't know if our board will ever act on it, but it was good to say something, thanks.
Our attorney's pretty sharp. He hasn't missed much, plus he's a big SUV guy.
Can't remember where I parked my car.
Welcome to the club. Village Court, Jody.
I just wanted to remind the village residents that we are winding down on village tax season. We will be accepting them for another six weeks through October 31st. And after that, they will be turned over to the county. So I just wanted to remind everybody that you can still pay your taxes right now.
Very good. Anything else? Senior Senator Supervisor, Mrs. Troy.
Mrs. Troy, I just wanted to let folks know that the walk went very well, thanks to the sponsors, the local businesses that sponsored us, Ann Berber that walked, it went really well. We had a great night, the weather was perfect, so we're happy about that. Also want to let people know that we're doing a vaccine clinic next Wednesday, the 27th, from 10 a.m. until noon. Friday we'll be providing it, and there's going to be several immunizations available. So the most recent COVID vaccine will be there, your flu shot will be there, also RSV, shingles, and the pneumonia shot. So check in with your primary care and see what they want you to get and what order, and come on over and take care of that. No appointments necessary, just bring your insurance card.
This is for seniors?
I don't give insurance, anybody away that came in and wanted to be vaccinated.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Move on. Excuse me. Superintendent of Public Works, Chuck.
It's been a busy couple of weeks. The highway just finished brush again, they'll be starting the week after next. We're getting a lot of calls, people are putting it right back on the street. It's not this coming week, it's the week after that, we'll be back on the brush again. Part of our stuff that we had to do with EPA was move our mulch pile, we got that whole thing moved. We're doing a little more work on some of our detention basins. PAC-71 is going to help us down at Mercer Park. They're looking for a project and the gazebo need to paint. So they're going to come down there this week and do some of that, so that'll be a nice upgrade. The water department, for people that live up around Brown Street, they've been very busy up there this last week. They're probably one of the hydrants up there, and one of the vials blew out, and another one blew out, and then a third one there. It must have been a batch in those vials, the bolts are actually just rusted, they're just disintegrated. And two of them, we didn't have parts to fix it, and I gotta give Corey Perkins credit. He says, we can fix this, we can get some gasket material. I said, nah, I've never done that before. He got two of them fixed, they had another one today, there's another one next week to fix. And it's just, the packings are just, bolts are just given out of them. It must have been the ear or in that area. So we thank the people for putting up with this up there, we've had the water off two, three times during the day. We're able to do it during the day. And a lot of, actually, the Facebook page and the village page really helps. We went door to door today to let them know, when it's emergency, a lot of times we don't get out to that. But the health departments have been involved with it, they know exactly what we're doing. And hopefully that'll get buttoned up here in the next week or so. We're also doing crosswalks, painting the crosswalks, you know, if you could just give the guys a break, people are running them over there trying to get these crosswalks painted. We have 18 in the village that we do. We did a couple extra for the school over there on Ford Street this year. But it's kind of, nice the paint dries quickly, but people don't want to give you any time. Other than that, Luster's questions?
Chuck, you mentioned EPA had to smooth the mulch. Are we putting the new stuff?
We're just not going to put it as far back. They asked concerns about how close it was to the river. So we got it all out of there. So we just won't put it back as far. I mean, there was years of it back there because nobody would take it, and we had nowhere to put it. Now all of a sudden, there's some interest in it, which is great for us. I think we took 500 loads out of there. We're glad we could, for the longest time, just nobody wanted it.
So?
Yep.
Thanks, Chuck. Go with the police beat, Mike.
Thank you, Eric. Earlier this weekend, a meeting with the fire department, fire chief, one of the deputy chiefs regarding Lieutenant Lockwood, the Prey to Lights event, planning stages for that, looking to ensure a successful and safe event this year. A lot of people don't realize the size and scope of something like that, the amount of planning that goes in. You know, trustee Seco's committee has been meeting and things, so this is something that's ongoing. And obviously, we'll be meeting with the Quonix Club in the future to, same thing with the turkey trot on Thanksgiving Day. So we're in that mode of looking to plan for those events. And then I did some media interviews yesterday in relation to the school system, putting in a weapons detection system up there. That's something that superintendent and myself and others have had many discussions on over the last few months. And this is in response to a survey that they put out to the parents and the community, asking what they were looking for. So this is something that we knew about, and the implementation of that will be coming pretty soon at the upper grade levels. And then filtering down to the other schools as time moves forward. So it's a great partnership and appreciate the opportunity to work closely with the district. And I'll certainly keep this board informed and the community as well as things move forward along with the superintendent.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. It was nice to see, of course, the headline on Syracuse County was "On the Dogga County School", I said, couldn't say Baldsville, put it in the headline?
I believe there's a reason for that, because if you said Baldsville, the people would know. If you say On the Dogga, you got to.
Everybody read it?
No, you have to click on it to read it.
True. And I also wanted to, we were talking in the work session a little bit about arrest made and some damage to village property. And, you know, first of all, we wish it never happened, but if people are going to do that, it's nice to know that we are catching a few of them, you know. And, you know, if anybody out there sees people causing damage to our village property. I mean, some of this is the bridge next to Sheen's underneath, stuff on Papier-Mil Island. If you see kids out there acting like vandals, call 911. Let's just, we can catch them before they get away. And the board gets around, a few people are getting arrested, it might slow some stuff down. But hats off to the crew for catching some people.
I will pass those words along.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I would like to say we were done, but I forgot somebody. Mark, you're on, our treasurer at home, Mark Baker.
I thought this was must be present to win or something. Just a couple really quick things, we'll talk about the budget, as if there are any questions when that agenda item comes up. Second thing, the bond rate has been finalized by Salvi Bank at 4.5%, which is crazy, because we're making 5.2% at NYclass. So I immediately told Salvi we would take 100 million, and we're just going to borrow it and move it over to NYclass and invest it. I guess that's how it works. That was, the other thing was NYclass. So the bond, we're going to close that the first week in October is what the schedule is. Chuck believes that we can have the vehicle by then, I think. I haven't heard the latest update, but last we talked, and so the rate is good for a few days after that. So we do have to try and hit close to that. And then NYclass, we have moved, the moves are pretty much done for now, but we have ended up with about 4.8 million in over there, earning 5.21%. And it's gone very smoothly. I've had no feedback from either of the banks. I will tell you that M&amp;T's treasury options are way up. And, you know, it makes it challenging that maybe some of the money should be back in M&amp;T, except that it's, I mean, I say they're way up, they're 15 or 20 basis points above NYclass, but you have to tie the money up for 30, 60, 90 a year, whatever. So maybe that'll be food for thought earlier in our year, because we get tax revenue, and then we kind of live off that money for the rest of the year, and we don't need a lot of it until further out into the year. And so we could invest that maybe in, you know, a term treasury like that where we wouldn't need the money. So just something to think about for next spring. And that's all Luster's questions.
I think for viewers that perhaps don't know Mark, our treasurer, we maybe should reassure them that the village isn't going to borrow a whole bunch of money.
Your sense of.
Yeah, that was kind of a goofy, like, attempt at a joke.
We got it. We all got it.
Who doesn't know Mark Baker, though? In all of public.
This is true. Thank you, Mark, for the.
As I was telling you that, though, it does make you think, like, they're going to loan us money at 4.5%. And, you know, I, maybe there's a strategy to them keeping their deposit rates lower. So they're able to keep the loan rates lower, too. So.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. Hope you go better. No, we have no pending business under new business. I get a motion to approve budget modifications to recognize receipt of the On the Dogga County grant for replacement of the Papier-Mil Island sign. And by the way, I've seen a couple people have taken pictures of events on the island at Baldsville.
I was just going to say, this weekend at Taste of Baldsville was the first opportunity I had to see it at night, and it really, really does look great.
So now when people come down in their boats into the village, they're going to see Baldsville, it's up there, and that boat was up there. And I think that was a great move. I don't remember where it started, whoever had the idea, but maybe it was a group collaborative, but it was a great move. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Wait, timeout, timeout, timeout.
Yeah, this is an either or.
Sorry. There was a decision that you had to make there, too, on which option was the other half of that. You can, you, that money came out of the parks budget, and it was not normally in the parks budget. And then we got the grant, so we ran through the parks budget. So one option is to restore the parks budget up by that amount of money. But the parks budget still has $10,000 left in it for the year, and we're kind of coming into the, to the slow time in the parks, so to speak. The other option, we, you know, we're going to draw $85,000 from fund balance this year, less contingency of $50,000. So we're still going to draw 35,000 from contingents, or from fund balance. You can reduce what we would draw, is what the other offset would be. So we wouldn't have to draw 35, we'd draw 31 or whatever it is, which, you know, I'm always a supporter of stuff like that. But you can choose either one of those options. And my recommendation, unless Chuck screams about it, would be to reduce the draw in fund balance.
I was going to ask Chuck if he felt like there was things that were going to happen in the parks.
The big ticket items that we have right now is we had a motor fail on one of the lawnmowers, and we're limping along here, and we're definitely going to have to do something next year. But that's what came to mind, you know. It's something we could do this year with, but I'm just not sure if we're going to make it. We're, the third mower that we're using is a 25-year-old mower now. That's part of if we're going to make it through next year's budget.
And if we get down into December and we find that we need the money, you can always restore it to the parks budget.
Okay. Oh, we're good then.
Is the new mower in your budget?
It's going to be, it's not in this year's budget.
You didn't put it in this. 24 years old, you were happy with it.
And then our middle mower popped a mow here.
Okay.
And that made that old one look really good because it was running.
So we have to vote separately, vote to move it, or just acknowledge that's what we're going to do?
Now, you have to decide on which one of those two second pieces you want there, and, or like you said, vote separately, but then the other three are pretty much housekeeping.
So we have a motion. What was Meg's motion?
To approve the budget modifications, but I guess it didn't, it wasn't spelled out.
We need to amend it to.
We need to, yeah. Somebody want to amend that motion?
Make it well, she's going to decreasing the budget for the general fund line A 599, appropriate fund balance by $4,003 from $85,415 to $81,412. Correct?
That's my amendment, yes.
I will amend that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can we get a vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? I want to say something, because I don't have anything here that says that.
It's in the hash list for the meeting, that's what's on my front, that's what I'm looking at.
Oh, okay. All right. AMB, motion to approve budget modifications on proposals 2-4 from Budget Modifications Memo.
Wait a second. Do you want discussion?
Do you have it in writing, Mark?
Yes, I do.
Could you read it to us so all the trustees are aware of what it is?
Yeah, there's three proposals there. One is budget modifications to recognize receipt of an On the Dogga County grant to work on Village Hall, and to authorize the use of 2020 project bond funds to cover the village matching portion of the project. So we got a grant, and there was a small match that was required by the village in order to use that grant. And that paid for the work that the Cochran Company did on the Village Hall. I think it was insulation, painting, and things like that. The second one is to authorize the expense of the new EAP program budget-wise, which we didn't do. So there is a new line item that needs a budget of $3,000 to pay for the EAP program. And I took the liberty of using $3,000 from the contingency account fund to do that. I decreased the contingency account fund from $50,000 to $47,000 to compensate for that. The third thing was that for several years now, I think I discovered we've been booking principal and interest on bond payments to ban payments or ban lines in the budget. And it's kind of semantics with the state. But the state brought it to my attention that we have statutory installment bonds now, and we're reporting the payments as banned principal and interest. So I modified our budget, I just reduced the budget in the ban lines and increased the budget in the bond lines. And, you know, the ban lines will go away in case we ever, unless we ever get back into bans. But that's purely housekeeping, they, you know. So that's the three of them.
Anybody have any questions for Mark on that? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thanks for all that work, Mark.
Well, thanks for doing that, and talk to you soon.
Thank you. Item C, Eric, can you read that motion?
Approve to purchase equipment for SCADA system improvements from the SCADA Tech for $34,000. for $34,150.
Was there something else in that with it?
That was it.
Okay.
It's a motion to authorize Chuck to...
Okay. I hear them still, thank you.
Were we going to say that it would be taken out of water, or do we not know that?
I assume that's where it's going to come from.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's the motion.
Do we add that to the question?
And if we decide something different, whether we'll have to get a modification from the money pool? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Before, not that much, I'd like some discussion, I think, for, for the record, I'd like Chuck to explain that this is a sole provider of this, of these materials in service, so that is the reason that we're going, without going through it.
All right, this individual has, for the last 20, 25 years, has wrote all our programs, and this, this controls all our pumps, all our lift stations, the sewer, the water, the tanks, and we get real-time information, all our alarms come through this, and it's just fantastic. If we were to go outside that, we'd be writing all new programs, and this individual's very well-known in the state, and we're going to stay.
And you could almost, the way that the technology's gone, you could almost say that this is an exclusion, because it's professional services.
Right.
But I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. Opposed? Carry it. Anybody have any other business to bring up before we go into executive session? Move the night yawn, you've got a long night ahead of you. All right, I get a motion to move into executive, executive session two, and then one with contractual personnel.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
All in favor? All right. Opposed? Carry it. See you everybody in two weeks.